Good evening. I'd like to call to order this, the regular town council meeting for Tuesday, May 9th, 2017. Please rise for a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Thank you. Fishbein, Laughlin.
Here.
Luterno.
Here.
Marone.
Here.
Shertel.
Here.
Sullivan.
Here.
Testa.
Here.
Zandry.
Here.
Chairman Savoni.
Here, Counselor. Fishbein has advised me that he is en route and should be here shortly.
On to item three, the consent agenda.
Mr. Chairman, I move we approve and accept consent agenda items A through N.
So moved.
Do you mean the second?
The second, sure.
Counselor Luterno with the second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And the opposed, hearing none, the consent agenda passes. Item four would have been items removed from the consent agenda. There are no items removed from consent. Number five is the public question and answer period. Mr. Chardullo.
Paul Chardullo, Tubay Berry Drive. Before I comment, will the public have an opportunity to comment prior to the motion to pass the budget?
The public will be allowed to comment prior to the vote on the motion to pass the budget.
Yes, okay, that was my question, thanks.
Yes.
Yeah, just a couple of things related to the budget because obviously that's the big feature tonight. Came across an interesting, just quickly, a survey that was conducted by the Senior Citizens League, which is a national organization, and they commented to the effect that for the 50 year in a row, 60 million people who depend on Social Security have had to settle for historically low increases. The average recipient adds up to a monthly increase of $4 a month over the last five years. So seniors are not doing too well in this environment, and you know, the gap between growth and cost was very pronounced, in particular, in the areas of medical costs and food costs. And if you happen to own a home, municipal taxes is a big part of the budget. So I just pass that on. If, as it relates to the tax issue, in Wallingford, as I've commented, a number of people have commented in previous meetings, we have a, we seem to have either a policy or a philosophy of raising taxes every year. And if you were paying, say, $5,000 a year, five years ago, as a senior, or anyone else for that matter, you know, with the modest increases that we've had, you'd be looking at $5,500 today. So that's a $500 increase in five years, which is, which is pretty big. And somehow we have to address that. Another comment, which related to a discussion from the last meeting, there was a lot of conversation about, discussion regarding the need for police officers. Did we need more police officers, or didn't we? And I did a little digging, I mean, it's information that's available to all of you, and it's within our own audit reports. If you look at the police department in the last 10 years, physical arrests have been up 38% in the last 10 years. Staffing has been up about seven. Traffic violations were up 46%. So, you know, it's not an absolute, but that seems to suggest that whoever was raising those issues, and there were a couple of counselors that were supportive of it, that suggests that we should take a hard look at it. I don't think that, my own personal view is that we should not expect the police chief or any other department head to come into these meetings and oppose their own budget, which has been approved already by the mayor when we get in here. That's just not realistic. But that's just my opinion. Last point I want to make is that last week, I attended the first three hours of the meeting, and I'd say it was rather...
Not the last two and a half?
No, no, I left after the first three hours. And it was, it was rather painful, as I watched Counselor Zandry and Mr. Fishbein, Counselor Fishbein, trying to propose a reduction in a count, and all of the back and forth that went on. And it occurred to me, and this is my view, that the council has allowed itself to be sort of tied up in the knots, or immobilized at times, by the procedures that have been established predominantly by the administration. And not necessarily consciously, but you've kind of allowed that to happen, and you've sort of bought into it. My view is that the council, and I think this is supported by the charter, the council doesn't need permission from the administration or the mayor to do anything. As a governing body, you make laws, you change laws. When you speak with one voice, you can pretty much do whatever you want to do. And I think that you need to do more of that. I think you have a fair amount of power that's been vested in each one of you, and certainly collectively, that you've received from the, from the people who voted for you. But you have to be willing to exercise that power in the face of criticism from wherever you get it. So I'll end by saying that I think that sufficient data has been provided to this, to this body, to support the idea of canceling this tax increase. My understanding is it's a $2.8 million tax increase, and apply that entire reduction to the general government budget. The reason I picked the general government budget is that, if you look at history, the last five years, the surplus out of the general government budget has been in excess of 3 million. So I have no reason to believe that the same thing's not going to happen this year or next year unless the council acts on it. There's no risk to doing that, because certainly if the administration decides that it needs a little more money halfway through the year, they can come back to the council and request it. And if it's justified, you give it to them. So, Mr. Chairman, will you make that motion?
I typically don't make motions.
Okay. But you're permitted to, right?
I think our rules permit me to, if something needs to move and no one else has moved it.
Okay. So I haven't seen anybody move this. I'm asking that it's something that should be considered, and I think it would be very appropriate to come from you as the chairperson. Is there more data that you need, or is there any reason not to?
You know, it's interesting that you asked me that question, because having sat through a five and a half hour session where attempts were made to cut into the budget, and as I observed what attempts were made to cut into the budget, and where money, where money was sought.
Yep.
From places like the electric division budget, and like, where cuts were made from the pension allocation, which is calculated by an actuary, and the health insurance payment, which is calculated by a professional consultant dedicated to just that purpose. What it proved to me is that there is not considerable fat in this budget that is really locatable. What I observed is that the surpluses occur as a result of the fact that we end up collecting more taxes than we project. And that's, that's, that's not something I'm going to fault the administration for when they use, Mr. Bose, is it 98% that we use as a projected collection rate?
It's been in the neighborhood, the neighborhood of 98% the last couple of budgets, yes.
To me, that's a responsible projection of what you're going to collect of the taxable property in town. So I really have a hard time suggesting that there's $2.8 million to slash and burn from general government. So, no, I'm not going to make that motion.
Okay.
There's other counselors up here, eight of them, and they are free to do so.
So you don't feel that the audited history that's been produced, which shows an average of $3.1 million in excess revenue for the last five years at least, and...
I'm not sure I agree that there's been an average of $3.1 million of excess revenue over the past five years.
All right, well, I suggest you take a look at the audit report.
My recollection of the numbers is lower, is more like half of that.
No. But it's, it's in the audit report, and maybe that's something that the council needs to do, is to figure out how to provide some accurate data that we all agree with and understand, because I think part of the problem is, there is confusion. And, but, the reality is, I've not heard the administration challenge that, those numbers since I've been coming up here. They may challenge it tonight, but it's 3.1 million on the revenue side, 3.1 million on the expense side, and secondarily, the 4.2 million in reserves that are allocated every year, we've never used a penny of it. So I'm really, I'm really surprised to hear that you don't hear any, you see no evidence that we have a fat budget. But if that's your position, so be it. I happen to think it's wrong, but...
I'm aware of that.
Maybe someone else will pick this up, thanks.
Thank you. Mr. Gross?
I raise my hand. Bob Gross, Long Hill Road. When you do the budget, does the mayor work in concert with either the chairman or any of the counselors, so you don't have these budget hearings the way you have them, that if you, do you have workshops with the mayor during, to make these budgets, or just if the mayor do it unilaterally?
Process per the charter, and the process that I'm aware of, is that the mayor beats with the department heads to find out what the grand list produced, and what the department heads' needs are, and, and through those variety of meetings comes up with a budget. I meet with him with respect to the council budget.
But there's nothing precluding you from sitting in with the mayor on those budgets, or some of the counselors, to try and get a better feel for the budget?
Well, I'm not so sure that counselors should be invited to every administrative meeting, but...
I didn't say everyone, I'm just talking the budget.
Well, then, how do you pick and choose?
Well, this seems to be one that goes on for weeks and weeks and weeks, and affects everybody to some degree, because it's tax dollars, whether people say it's over taxation or not, over, not, dollars and cents mean a lot to pretty much everybody in town. I don't think there's a more important, this is how the town runs, this is where the Board of Ed gets their budget, the fire department, police department, et cetera. As Mr. Chardullo was saying, the police department's been, even when even D'Ortensio was here, our number of police officers is much lower than other forces in the area. And they have to be getting strained from all the activity that we have, because we have a Walmart, et cetera, in town here, and the drug situation that's going on in the community. But that's, so, nobody gets involved, because you, mayor has pretty much absolute then, because as you know, we have a strong mayoral form of government, you need seven votes to override the mayoral veto, if you guys want to make some changes to it, even if you got five votes, the mayor can stop it in moments' notice. Just saying that this is the time, I don't know when you're going to be having your charter revision budget, a charter revision, yeah, charter revision, meeting, one of the things that you can bring up is the strong mayoral form of government, whether it's this mayor or some other mayor. It makes it so whatever the mayor says, pretty much goes, and nobody can say no here, unless somebody, you really think that the mayor wants something in the budget, as long as he wants in that budget, it's there. Whether it's this mayor, or where Mr. Attorney Farrell, or whether it be Mr. Bose, if they were mayor, it's whatever they would want.
Well, Mr. Bose can't be mayor.
I understand, but that was, that was just a hypothetical type situation, just picking people so it wouldn't be picking on the mayor. Do you think, you know, this is the opportunity to try and make it so you could have more give and take with the mayor on a budget process? Yes, no?
I've been listening to everything you've been saying, and if there was a question in there...
The question is, it's your opportunity, you think that you will take a look at a strong mayoral form of government, because what happens in a situation like this happens the other night, even though you can get five votes to do something, it can't stand.
So the, I believe the public hearing on the charter as revised will be May 23rd, and the council's meeting with the Charter Revision Commission, I believe, will be on June 6th.
So you're going to make your recommendations present on June 6th?
That's correct.
So you have the opportunity to do that, because you're talking about certain things within the charter, now even with how the mayor does the budget and so forth, these are things that if you feel that there's something there, that you can make it more, more open and more beneficial to the community, and I'm going to take the mayor's, take this mayor out of it. You could have a mayor in there who wants certain things in that budget, and it's going to be very difficult to override that mayor, because of the way the budget's set up. And you really should take this opportunity to do that, because there's really nothing else that you really override the mayor on, except for the budget. And this is a question about the budget. There are shared services, this is to the chair, to the controller, there are shared services in town, and departments use, whether it's Attorney Farrell or your office, how do they pay for those services, Mr. Bose?
What do you mean, how do they pay for those? The law office, if they're asked to render an opinion?
So Attorney Farrell's office is doing work for another division in town here, and you can see in some budget items...
Paid for out of the law department budget.
All of it? Even enterprise zones? So say the electric division.
No, the utilities pay their own way.
And, and so how do they pay for that? They send you a check, or?
Well, it depends what the service is for.
Well, last year, you're doing, there's been some involvement because of the CMAC issue, and we're not discussing CMAC, but Attorney Farrell's been down there a lot lately, or last year. And so, and I'm sure that Attorney Farrell and Attorney Small have been in discussions with the electric division then. How do you accumulate, how do you figure out the hours, and how do you figure out how much is paid?
We don't, we don't sit and, go ahead, I didn't mean to cut you off.
Oh, no, that's fine, yeah.
There's no minute-by-minute timekeeping.
Right.
They'll take probably another position or two. There is a proportional charge that the general fund receives in revenue from the three utilities for services rendered to those utilities. In addition, if the utilities render services on behalf of the general government, we pay them as well.
And so...
For example, the IT people are employed by the electric division. There is a proportional charge that the controller's budget actually pays for, for those folks.
And so approximately, how much do they pay, say, this year's budget, to town?
I don't have that information in front of me.
Okay. And it's an actual transaction of cash, or is it just paper?
It's, it's through, well, it's through journal entry, and it does hit cash, correct. We don't, we don't cut checks per se, we make journal entries.
And utilities are the only ones that do that?
Correct, yeah.
Covanta, did they used to do that, Mr. Mayor? Was that also because you had shared services with Doreen and so forth?
That's a separate bookkeeping fund, a special revenue fund that's paid for by Covanta, approximately $60,000 a year, and I ask for your pardon, because it's an estimate. That's not part of the general fund, that $60,000 is paid for the coordinator and any expenses involved with the, with the project here in town.
And no other department pays for any of your services?
I believe not.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. I think we have time for one more speaker. Gentlemen in the yellow hat, your name and address for the record, please, please approach the microphone.
Name's Petroselli, I live in Meriden, I pay taxes in Wallingford. Meriden's a, Meriden is a rat hole of a town. I gotta commend you people on Wallingford.
Sir, closer to the microphone, please, we're recording the meeting. Thank you.
I gotta commend you people on Wallingford, it's very nice, pleasant town, not a lot of garbage in it, but as far as the taxes go, in Meriden or Wallingford or wherever, anybody that votes for an increase in taxes in Wallingford or Meriden or anywhere, they're crooks. They're crooks, and they don't even have a gun. They're robbing the taxpayers immersively. And the people, there's only a few people here tonight, but a few people had a, a lot of people in here frustrated about their taxes, right in your faces, you'd be thinking about increasing the taxes. Meriden, it's terrible what's going on, just like all over the country. The politriksers are robbing the people, and the people probably deserve to get robbed, because they're not saying much about it. And I don't have much more to say, but I am going to say it again. Anybody that votes for a tax increase, whether it's Wallingford, Meriden, or the other crooks in Hartford, they're robbers, and they don't even have guns. And just for your information, some people don't know, Jim Comey just got fired by Trump, and I hope Clinton gets indicted. But thank you for your rock. And Mr. Mayor, keep going. I'll see you next trip.
That ends our public question and answer period. On to item six.
Mr. Chairman, I move we approve a bid waiver for construction administration services by the firm Silver Petroselli and Associates for the Electric Division Garage.
Is there a second?
Good evening. Rick Hendershot, General Manager, Electric Division, to my immediate left, George Adair, Director of Public Utilities, and to my far left, Tom Sullivan, Electric Division Office Manager.
Thank you, what have you for us?
The item that just been teed up is a request for bid waiver so that we can use the architect of record for our proposed new line truck storage facility to provide construction administration services. That scope of work was not included in the bid, nor did the bid include reference pricing that we might be able to use Silver Petroselli as the successful bidding firm, and so, after consulting with the purchasing agent, who strongly advised that we try to retain the architect of record for this function, we're here asking for this bid waiver so that we might be able to do so.
Okay. Questions from the council, Counselor Fishbein?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So I'm always very hesitant when we get to this point, and I think we had a very similar situation with the cemetery, where Mr. Lazarus had done a lot of drawings preliminarily, and then the issue was whether or not we were going to go forward with waiving the bid to have his firm do it, and I think this body just determined that it should go out to bid, to at least see where, where the numbers came in. I know that this outfit has done a lot of good things for our town, a lot of projects in our town, I think collaborated with the town when the North Farms Firehouse came in higher after the, the drawings were done, and you know, redid the drawings, and I don't even think they charged us to redo the drawings, if I recall correctly. You know, personally, I don't see this being one of those situations where it's necessary. I mean, I look forward to being convinced, but I don't know that a bid waiver is in the taxpayer's best benefit at this point, based upon what I've heard and read. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Anyone else on the council? Questions from the public? Oh, I'm sorry, Counselor Marone.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, just real briefly, I don't really understand why we waive bids. I have to agree with Craig on this, actually. I don't understand why we waive bids on items like this, this doesn't seem like it's a structure that's going to, presents any particular challenge or concern, so I don't know why we wouldn't just go out to bid on it and see where, you know, where it can get us. I guess what's the harm of going out to bid, would be my question.
I believe the harm would be a qualified firm who didn't design the building comes in as the low bid, and then they're interpreting somebody else's specification when questions arise on the job site. Like I said, after consulting, consulting with the purchasing agent, who's shepherded a lot of these projects through the purchasing process, unlike the electric division or myself, this is the first new structure we've built in the 13 years I've been there, he strongly recommended that the architect of record be available for that service. And the proposal we have from Silver Petroselli is not an expensive one, we've indicated in the correspondence, $23,500. So I don't know how much lower it would go if put out to bid, this is the next item, when we talk about it, these bids are in the order of $1.6, $1.7 million. That's a relatively small figure compared to the entire size of the project, and to make sure the person that designed the thousand-page spec is the firm that's there to help interpret it, when the, when the constructor has questions about it, I think it's appropriate for that modest fee to secure those services.
Could I add something? I just want to make it very clear to anyone else watching this, that Silver Petroselli has, did win the bid for the design of the building, and they have carried that out all the way through to the detailed plans, drawing specifications for bid. Rick, do you happen to recall what the dollar figure for their work on all of that was, approximately, you know, but I'm sure several times...
Tom, does $80,000, $85,000 sound about right?
Yeah, well, I guess the point I'm trying to make is, this isn't a bid waiver to, to design a building, it is, it's, it's gone to bid, we have bids in hand, those are the basis for the next item on the agenda. This is just for the firm now, having done all of that, to be what I've heard referred to as the clerk of the works, or the entity that would oversee the, the construction process and represent the owner. So it's certainly, you know, not an insignificant undertaking or expenditure, but to echo Mr. Hendershot's point, it is, I think, critically important that the most knowledgeable entity we could identify, which would be the designer of the building, be the one to oversee its construction. And that's, that's the logic here for, for recommending this.
So just a clarifying question, Mr. Chairman, so this is, this building is one of a series of buildings already designed by Silver Petroselli, is that what you're saying?
No, it's fully designed for the electric division, has been bid, and is ready to be for the award of the bid to build it. So they've already taken this all the way to that point.
So you're saying they've already designed it without having...
No, they, they won a bid to design the building. Okay.
We just did not include construction administration services in their scope of work. They've taken this thing all the way from concept to design, to developing the bid specifications, and they are, as we speak, completing analysis of the bids, and will soon be giving us their official recommendation of, you know, to whom we should award the bid.
Okay, understood, thank you.
Counselor Luterno?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. How many other firms were, when this went out to bid, how many other firms were there?
How many other architectural firms?
Yeah.
I can't recall, at least a half a dozen.
And, the, so this, if I, I wanna make sure I understand this clearly, this is, this portion, this twenty-three, twenty-three thousand change is going to be basically for construction management?
Yes, they, the term of art is construction administration, but yes.
Okay, okay, that's good, I'm all set, Mr. Chairman, thank you.
Councilor Laffin?
Thank you, I'm comfortable with the winning bid architect, continuing on with construction administration, having somewhat of a background in that at some point in my career, it could just be much easier, much smoother of an entire process, you know, in the future, do we come back with an entire bid from plan to construction administration, you know, and think ahead, you know, maybe we can do that, but for this, I don't see any harm, and I think it, it makes sense in the construction world to do it this way. You often find GCs and construction administrators that are paired with architects anyway, and if they don't have them in-house, then they have a very close working relationship in the first place, and that's because of you run into problems where you get a strange architecture plan, and then you, you make mistakes, or it just causes complications in the planning and permitting process, so I'm comfortable with this, thank you.
Thank you, anything else from the council, anything else from the public? Oh, Councilor Fishbein?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, I might not understand that, well, let me go, let's go a different way, has the Electric Division bid out a project like this in the recent past?
Define recent?
Five years, ten years?
No.
Ten years?
No.
Okay, are, are we, are we in effect correcting a, an error, so to speak, that it should have been included in the bid originally, and we're trying to catch up with something that should have been done?
Well, I'll, I'll acknowledge that if I'd had this to do again, I've never overseen the design and construction of a building in municipal environment, I would include this in there, this whole process also went past the Purchasing Bureau, and it, it, we went out the way it went out, not including construction administration services.
So, it isn't like we thought about this in the beginning and, and meant to include it and omitted it, it's just, you know, that would be one situation.
It wasn't consciously excluded, if that's your question.
If we're looking to correct, you know, a procedural error, you know, I'm, I'm a little bit more persuaded, but if, if it's the town's practice to do these things separately, and this is the only time I've seen this sort of thing come before us on a bid waiver, because I know the town does other very large projects, and certainly with the firehouse, we didn't have, I don't know if it was included, these kind, kind of work was included with that project, but we certainly, I have a pretty good memory, didn't have, you know, the fire department coming to us afterwards saying, do a bid waiver for these kinds of things, so, just trying to get this into the, the context of where we are, so, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. If there's nothing else from the public, then Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Okey-dokey. Fishbein?
No.
Laffin?
Yes.
Letourneau?
Yes.
Marone?
Yes.
Chertel?
No.
Sullivan? Testa?
Yes.
I did get the yes, thank you. Testa?
Yes.
Sandri?
No.
Chairman Savoni?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Onto the next item, number seven.
Mr. Chairman, I move we approve an appropriation of funds in the amount of nine-hundred-and-twenty-five-thousand dollars from retained earnings account to general plants and structures for the Electric Division.
Is there a second? And this is the money to build the building?
This is the, the rest of the money to build the building.
Okay.
I believe two budgets ago, we budgeted nine-hundred-thousand dollars to, initially to construct what we envisioned as the replacement building for the existing structure. That was based on a, an admitted swag estimate from a, a budgetary estimate from an architect, and, and as I've since learned, it was really just for a, a structure on a slab, nothing else. As, so the, the, the building's been designed, the bids are in, and presently, the low bid with the all-in price is one million six-hundred-eight-four-thousand, and the second low bid is one million seven-hundred-and-sixty-eight-thousand and change. So, the, this requested additional nine-hundred-thousand dollars, initially, we had planned to include these funds in the upcoming seventeen, eighteen budget, because that's when the bulk of the work will get done, but as I've since learned, is that a project like this in a municipal environment can't be awarded unless all funds are in place for the bid award. So, we wanted to start construction, if at all possible, before the beginning of July to take advantage of the, the good weather through the rest of May and into June, so that possibly the structure can be completed before the winter weather, and we can move the, move the vehicles into the new building, and then use the old building for a storage shed for equipment and materials which presently sit outside, and other vehicles, smaller vehicles that sit outside. So, what we've effectively done is moved nine-hundred-thousand dollars that, at the beginning of the seventeen, eighteen budget process, we thought we would include in that budget, and brought it back into this budget, and so, resulting in a much larger capital budget for sixteen, seventeen, and a smaller than typical capital budget for seventeen, eighteen.
So if I understand you correctly, you've opened the bids, but you haven't yet awarded the bid?
Correct.
Because you wanna have this money in place first?
We need to have the money in place first, yes.
Okay.
Also, the bids weren't opened until the second of May, and later, late this afternoon, the architect wrote me and said, they had a lot of questions for the lowest bid, and wanted to understand it, to make sure they were comfortable in awarding to us, and I don't know if they will or not, but they'd gotten their first large set of answers back from that bidder, and they hadn't had a chance to go through them yet, and I read between the lines that there's going to be a couple more iterations with that bidder before the architect is comfortable in saying, yes, go with that firm, or no, go with your second lowest bid.
Okay. Questions from the council? Councilor Fishbein?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, so I know we've talked at length about this building in the past, as a result of this structure being erected and utilized by the division, do we anticipate that electric rates may go down?
Go down?
Yes.
No.
Okay, so, I guess a concern is that usually when we have development like this, we're talking about a two-million-dollar development, in the regular sector, we, we get additional revenues through taxes, and, you know, here we have the pilot payment in, in lieu of taxes to the town that's fixed, and I don't think there's been any talk about changing that based upon the increase of infrastructure, you know, two million dollars, so, I think that's of concern to me, I mean, I, I'm gonna vote in favor of it, but, you know, I think there, there should be some sort of adjustment on, on the pilot as a result of this, but I leave that for future discussions, so, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Councilor Sullivan?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, I'm assuming that this, this garage will provide security for about two million dollars' worth of capital property?
Yes.
Okay, and that, that's a key, and, and where's that property, I mean, where is that, where are these vehicles currently parking, are they accessible to people driving by?
No, the current, eight of our nine line trucks are currently stored in a much older metal shed that we euphemistically refer to as the pole barn?
Yeah.
Because that's how it started its life, and has been modified and added on to over the years. It's all behind a fence, locked gate, when we're not there, like right now, the, the gate would be closed and locked, and there's a person at the Electric Division twenty-four seven, we have security cameras, a lot of lights, the ninth line truck and some other equipment are parked inside old garage bays attached to the office building, one hundred John Street, a leftover from when it was a warehouse and service center and, and not an office building, the, the vehicles barely fit any longer, it's, it's the nature of these beasts, they've gotten longer, taller, anecdotally, in, in the winter, we've had issues where the frost heave has made, made it impossible to get vehicles back into the building that we're able to get out in the morning, and, and had to jockey them around and change which bays they were in, our, our newest small truck, we had to take the cone holders off the front of the trucks and modify them so that it could park in the parking space of the truck it replaced, so, the, the vehicles are all parked inside, but they barely fit where they're parked inside right now.
Okay, so Rick, with, with, with this new garage, I'll call it a garage, we won't have any equipment outside, all of it will be stored?
No, all, all nine of our trucks, also our, our overhead cable pulling rig, our backhoe, and our small dump truck will all fit inside this new building.
Okay, I'm good, thank you, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Anything, excuse me, anything else from the council? Questions from the public? There being none, Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Fishbein? Yes?
Yes.
Thank you. Laffin?
Yes.
Letourneau?
Yes.
Marone?
Yes.
Chertel?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Testa?
Yes.
Sandri?
Yes.
Chairman Savoni?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Onto item eight, which is to conduct a public hearing and consider an act on the ordinance entitled, An Ordinance Appropriating One Million Eight Hundred Thirty-nine Thousand Four Hundred and Twenty-five Dollars for the Planning, Acquisition, and Construction of Various Municipal Capital Improvements, 2017, 2018, and Authorizing the Issue of One Million Eight Hundred Thirty-nine Four Hundred and Twenty-five Dollars, I'm sorry, One Million Eight Hundred Thirty-nine Thousand Four Hundred and Twenty-five Dollars in bonds of the town to meet said appropriation, impending the issuance thereof, the making of temporary borrowings for such purpose. I hereby convene the public hearing for the One Million Eight Hundred Thirty-nine Thousand Four Hundred and Twenty-five Dollar appropriation and bond authorization for the 2017, 2018 Capital Improvement Program. The ordinance, which is the subject of this public hearing, is available to the public and may be obtained at this meeting from the town clerk. Is there a motion and a second to read the title of the proposed ordinance and to waive the reading of the remainder of the ordinance incorporating its full text into this minutes of this meeting?
Mr. Chairman, yes, so moved.
Moved and seconded, Madam Clerk, did you get that? Would you please call the roll on the vote for that motion?
Fishbein?
Is the motion to waive reading?
Yes.
Yes.
Laffin?
Yes.
Letourneau?
Yes.
Marone?
Yes.
Chertel?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Testa?
Yes.
Sandri?
Yes.
Chairman Savoni?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you, In Ordinance Appropriating One Million Eight Hundred Thirty-nine Thousand Four Hundred and Twenty-five Dollars for the Planning, Acquisition, and Construction of Various Municipal Capital Improvements, 2017, 2018, and Authorizing the Issue of One Million Eight Hundred Thirty-nine Thousand Dollars, Eight Hundred Thirty-nine Thousand Four Hundred and Twenty-five Dollars of bonds of the town to meet said appropriation, impending the issuance thereof, the making of temporary borrowings for such purpose. The public hearing is open, are there any comments from the public? Mr. Chardullo?
Paul Chardullo, Two Bayberry Drive, I recall that the last three budgets, it seems like we always, this is something that we tend, we do, before the actual budget itself, we, we ask approval, and historically, there's been a lot of dialogue about it in terms of whether it was necessary or not necessary, or whether we use it, or just need it just in case, I, I just have one question, and, and that is, if this particular ordinance were not approved, would the town be able to purchase these same items via the cap non-recurring?
Mr. Bose?
I believe we would not have the authority to do so.
Okay, then I'll leave you with a comment, I, I, I believe there's a number of areas that we have misinterpreted as it relates to the Connecticut statutes and the use of the Capital Nonrecurring Fund, and, you know, the way I read it, just person of one, the cap recurring cap, or the reserve fund from these Connecticut statute is intended to receive bonded money to be used for capital, apparently, we're not doing that, we're, we're getting the authorization for bonding, but then we're paying cash for these items, which, in my opinion, is not a good thing for a taxpayer, a taxpayer perspective, we should be bonding items that, pretty much in accordance with the amortization schedule, which, as I understand it, is anything over five thousand dollars that has a five-year life or longer, anything that meets that criteria, we should be bonding, and we're, we're not doing that, we're spending millions to drive down the bonds that the town is, is, has outstanding, and it would be good if we were doing that through productivity enhancements, or implementing technology, driving our costs down, and having money to, to buy, to buy back these bonds, but I don't think we're doing that, we're, we're taxing people to pay these bonds because of a policy that we have, and I, I really think that needs to be looked at.
Anyone else? Public hearing is still open. If there are no other comments for the public hearing, then, then I will close the public hearing. Is there a motion and second that the proposed ordinance appropriating One Million Eight Hundred Thirty-nine Thousand Four Hundred and Twenty-five Dollars for the 2017, 2018 Capital Improvement Program and bond authorization be adopted?
So moved, second.
Moved and seconded, discussion on the motion, Councilor Fishbein?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, to, to Mr. Bose, you stated that if this motion did not pass, that the town would not have the authority to engage in the activities, is, that's what you said, correct?
Well, there would be no authorization to spend these funds.
In this fashion?
That's correct.
Okay, so, assuming that the motion fails, and the cap and nonrecurring budget as presented and approved by the Planning and Zoning Department, which balances, because you have income from the Electric Division to general government, in fact, to the cap and nonrecurring account to be expended, why wouldn't those projects be able to happen?
Because you're authorizing the projects with the, the authorization of this ordinance, it's done by ordinance.
And yet, I think we learned last week that in the twenty or so years that you've been here, although the council-
You're making me older than I am, twelve and a half.
Okay, we'll give you twelve.
Hopefully, we'll get there, but.
In the, in the twelve and a half years that you've been here, although the council has authorized the issuance of the bonds, these, those projects had happened, but no bonding actually occurred. these, those projects had happened, but no bonding actually occurred.
We have not bonded for the cap and nonrecurring objects for about 15, 16 years.
Okay, so if one is to believe that these projects can only occur with the bonding, and yet, no bonding ever occurred, yet the projects happened, how do I jive that logically?
Well, the ordinance is, also provides, the bond ordinance, obviously, but the sale of bonds, as well as other revenues from the contribution from the electric pilot, as well of any state or federal grants that may be obtained for these projects that, you know, may not be available today, or not even known to us today. So there's other revenue streams as well, but the ordinance itself is a bond ordinance. It also extends the provisions where they, these projects will not lapse if not completed by June 30th of the year, which many of them do not by their very nature. So there's, and it obviously opens up to a very public forum, so to speak.
But the extension of the projects is possible to be extended in a subsequent budget by utilization of the, what is, in this budget, page 89, the things that we are carrying over. I think, I think if I recall correctly, the waste, West Dayton Hill Dam is actually on that page, which is a similar project as those that are on the cap and nonrecurring budget.
No, they're not. The source of those funds, of the appropriations in force, are the general fund. The sources, I should say, are from the general fund. Those are items that were budgeted in a prior year in the general fund that have, you know, budgeted in a manner so that they would be paid for over a series of years, or accumulate over a series of years, because you know at the end of that series of years, you're going to have some type of a balloon. For example, revaluation, I think it's a common one that I think we'd all understand. We try to, over five years, four or five years, we try to accumulate $700,000, give or take dollars, so that we don't have to come in and budget all at once in the year where we're going to start conducting revaluation and spike up the budget. So this way, it keeps the budget relatively even for that known project which is going to come five, every five years by state law. So it's, so some of those things are there, but the source of those funds were general funds.
She would agree with me that if this motion passes and the town does make full use of the bonding authorization, as well as the income from the electric division, it has double the amount of money to do the projects that are anticipated. We would be getting $1.8 million from the electric division.
Yeah, but-
And we would be bonding-
I would not sell bonds if I did not need to sell bonds.
Understood, and it's my position that you won't, and you don't need to now, but merely my hypothetical was if you utilize what's before us, as well as the income from the electric division, you're going to have double the amount of money as is anticipated in this budget.
I believe that may be, I believe that may be true, but I'd have to check with the law.
Mr. Chairman, I don't think that's true at all. You're limited by the projects that have been identified and by an amount of money. If you don't have all of that money in cash, and for some other reason you choose to bond, then you are still dealing with that limited number of projects described by the money, the amount indicated as the subject of the ordinance. So it doesn't double.
Okay, so let's take the hypothetical further. We talked about the other day that not all of the electric division money, the cap and nonrecurring money, the pilot funds, they aren't always expended in total on those projects. In fact, there's some monies being held from projects in the past that hadn't used up all of that money. That's correct, right, as you said the other night?
There are, well, there are ongoing projects that were budgeted in prior years, but then there's also funds that, once the projects are completed, if the projects come in under budget, yes, there are funds available in that, in that fund.
Okay, so there is no mandate that every dollar that's in there be used for those projects? So let's just say that you bonded to the full extent, and you didn't utilize any of the pilot money that you're getting anyway on those projects. That's possible?
Is it, from a fiscal standpoint, possible? Yes. But again, I would, I would rather talk the law before I would do something like that.
Well, there's nothing in the, in the law, the way the ordinance is drafted, or the way the ordinance sits, that would prevent that. It would probably not be prudent.
I understand.
Or not prevented from doing that.
I understand your point, yeah.
So in this budget, where is the income from the bonds shown?
Well, there's no income from the bonds unless you sell bonds. And when you actually receive the funds from the sale of the bonds, the cash, that's when you recognize the revenue.
Okay, so what's before us currently is not, the income is not shown in this budget?
Not from a bond sale.
From any sale?
No, the income on page 83 is, you'll see the electric division.
It's a totally different source, though.
Correct.
Okay, so-
But you won't see bonds because you don't, you don't recognize bonds, you don't record bond sales until you actually sell the bonds to get the cash?
But, but you're asking us to approve the sale of bonds for the anticipated projects that are in this budget?
It's the, it's the legal mechanism that we, that the town has utilized since 1964, when the ordinance was created.
Yeah, this is the procedure that we've gone, but the town's never actually utilized it.
Well, Mr. Chairman, the ordinance authorizes the expenditure of money for the described projects. How that money is received is left open. Whether it's bonding or other sources of revenue is permitted by the ordinance, and that's a management decision by the finance department, given all of the other issues surrounding the expenditures and appropriations that the town of Wallingford deals with. This is an authorizing document that describes what it can be spent on and how much can be spent. Where the money comes from is left as a series of options. It does not require bonding, it authorizes spending to the amount of the dollars shown.
But why isn't this body the one to determine whether or not to bond?
Because that's a management decision regarding the finance department. The finance department is entrusted with investments, entrusted with all of the accounting, the handling of the money that is due, collectible by the town. That is pursuant to their duties, they have the expertise to do that. Where they need authority to take a matter in a given direction, they seek that authority, and in this case, they're, we are seeking approval of a, of an authorization to be spending money on capital projects pursuant to the capital nonrecurring fund. But the finance department ultimately is responsible for handling all of the funds of the town.
But we've identified the projects, we've established that money's coming in to do the projects. Why, we're not going to stop anything by the administration or you mayor coming to us and saying, "The money is insufficient," or "I want to bond this, will you approve a bonding authorization?" I don't understand why that isn't the procedure.
The town pursuant to the state statute has established, adopted an ordinance that describes funding of the capital nonrecurring fund. The program that has been stated many times works very well.
No, I'm not, we have the money going from the electric division into the cap and nonrecurring, I'm not questioning that. And actually, the ordinance, as we adopted, also allows for a payment from the general fund into that as well.
That's correct, and all of this goes into the capital nonrecurring fund, which is then managed by the finance department to see that work is performed on behalf of the town of Wallingford.
Okay, well, I think that's, that should be our decision when we get to that point. But Mr. Boz, where in the budget is the debt service for these bonds that aren't going to be issued reflected?
Well, there are no bonds issued for cap and, I should say, there are no bonds outstanding for cap and nonrecurring fund right now, so-
I understand, but we, you're asking us, or someone's asking us, the mayor's asking us, to authorize carte blanche unilateral decision to issue these bonds. I would think that it's contemplated there's going to be debt service associated with these bonds.
No, there would only be debt service if we sold bonds.
Okay, well, so you're telling us you're, you're not going to sell bonds, why should we vote in favor of this?
Well, if we sold bonds, it depends on the year, on the time of year when you would be selling bonds. If you sold bonds within the first six months of a fiscal year, normally, you would have a six-month interest payment due in the second six-month period, portion of the fiscal year, normally. I mean, you could put that off. Obviously, you'd be paying more interest on it, and your first principal payment would come next fiscal year in the 1819 budget. That's where you would see the bond payment, the first bond payment, bond and interest payment.
Okay, so it wouldn't fall within this, well, it would fall in the second half of this budget, would it not?
If funds were bonded in the fall, let's say from July 1st to December 30th.
Well, I have to, I guess if you're asking us to vote for this, I have to assume, I guess, that there's some glimmer, I guess, of issuing bonds, so I have to think about the debt service, I would, I guess. So you're telling me that in this budget, we don't budget for income from selling bonds, and we don't budget for the debt service that, a portion of which would arguably occur in this budget at all?
In the document that you have in front of you, that's correct.
And we're paying Mr. Fozzie to sit here to-
Yes.
Deal and have for the past many years, although there's no intent to sell bonds?
Like I said, the document is more than just a bond ordinance, it's an authorization.
You know, Mr. Chairman, this is a plan right now, could it change? Yes, we don't know what's going to happen with the state. I heard a state senator speak this morning, and absolutely no forecast of what was going to happen at the state. Could we change some of these things as a result of what happens in a few weeks or months? This is based upon an intention right now, but could there arise a circumstance where for other reasons you wanted to change this? Yes, and then we would be seeking bonds. It's an option.
But then what would we use the electric division funds for? Because this is exactly what we talked about last week, and it was, it's sacrosanct, you can't touch it. Ordinance is, you know, notice has gone out, so now we would perhaps use, we'd bond and use the pilot funds for something else?
You know, let's, let's call this for what it is, it's a desperate search to look to bond money.
By who?
In today's day, in today's climate, a desperate search to bond money so we can spend more for a given item than what we really need to spend. That's what we're talking about.
I'm not, I'm not proposing that we bond anything here, I'm saying you don't need this.
But you're objecting to it because we're not possibly going to bond. Why would you want to bond?
I don't, but-
Okay, then what are we talking about?
Spending a lot of money, we're paying Mr. Fozzie, if, if there's no need, if the procedure is in place for something to happen with the state, let's say, and then mayor for you to come to us and say, "I need a bonding ordinance to do a project," to do it at that point. But just to unilaterally say, "We've got the backstop here, mayor, you go figure it out," that's irresponsible, and I can't support that. So, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Counselor Testa.
I don't know if this will help clear up or not, but I remember a long time ago getting a little confused by this, because it just seemed counterintuitive to me to, we had this discussion, why would you pass an ordinance authorizing bonding when you have no intention of authorizing bonding? And the simplest answer I got, even though the reasons, you know, escaped me, were that this was a mechanism, simply was the mechanism we followed in order to be able to authorize the use of the capital nonrecurring fund. And with the understanding that they're not, they're not going to bond. And I wish it, it could be worded differently, I wish it could be done differently, but I was always explained to me that this is a mechanism that we go through based on a number of things, and it's been determined over the years to be the most, I guess, efficient and legal way to do it, which still provides the finance department the flexibility to get these things done. And that's why I didn't, I haven't had the need to question it, because I see it as a formality, it's a technicality. Because I know we're not bonding this and then still spending the money. I mean, to question it in such a way is to make people wonder out there that, wait a minute, so you're going to bond a million dollars and not spend the million dollars, and where's that money going to go, and all this other stuff? That's, that's a little unfair, because that's not what we're trying to do here. And far be from me to, to stick up for the administration's manner of budgeting and all, and all the other things. But in this particular case, I just think it's a little misleading to, to question it in such a manner. And it's not your first year on the budget, I mean, on the council. You've passed, we've had this every year you've been here, we've done it this way. I can understand if someone wants to say, you know, "I don't like it like this anymore." We've got to find a different way to do it, because it's too darn confusing and misleading. But that's not, but that's not how the questioning's going. The question's like, gee, I've, like out of nowhere, I've discovered something that seems fishy, and that, that's really not fair. That's all.
Counselor Laterno.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Jim, if this didn't pass tonight, and at some point during the year, you needed to bond, couldn't you come back to us?
Our difficulty is that if it does not, it is not approved now, you have a 30, 30-day period. This authorizes these projects to go forward. This happened one year, it didn't get approved in the May timeframe, and we almost lost a summer because of issues of then, then having it approved later on, because it is an ordinance. I mean, this, this is our cap and nonrecurring fund. This is the way it's dealt with. So projects get finished, but we, we like it in place by July 1st, otherwise, we can't start with projects. Because this authorizes, the expenditure authorizes as of July 1st, the ability to move ahead with the projects is outlined in the, in the ordinance and in the budget itself.
But what I've heard tonight is, we haven't used this in the past 16 years.
We have used it every year. The ordinance authorizes the funding of these projects. Whether the funding comes from bonding, or whether it comes from other revenues, the ordinance doesn't decide that. It authorizes that these projects are sanctioned for construction, and we can move ahead with it because we have the money, and they are approved for expenditure.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I think there's a piece missing here, but-
So I'm, I'm looking at the actual ordinance, and it starts with section one, the sum of $1,839,425 is appropriated. So the first step in the ordinance is the appropriation. If you read on to section two, it then says, "If necessary, the town can bond or borrow, make such borrowings as may be necessary to effectuate said products, projects." So it's clear to me that the purpose of this motion that's on the table is to appropriate the funds, the bonding is ancillary.
Counselor Fishman?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. You know, so first of all, we learn by sitting up here. And the fact that we have never bonded this, I didn't know this till last week, so we learn by being up here.
That is not true. Just to clarify, bonds were issued in the past, not in recent years, but they were. You can't say they never, there's never been a bond issued.
Okay, I'll clarify that at least in the last 12 years, this has never been bonded. So my question is, since, and I thought Mr. Boz already answered this, if we approve the budget, the book, as presented, that has the income from the pilot and the list of projects on the next page, and we don't do this, doesn't that appropriate the funds for the completion of the projects? No, it doesn't. So why not? Is it in our local ordinance that we have to do this?
I believe it's in the series of the six ordinances that we, the town's adopted since the 60s, then. I believe it is. I haven't read them for a while, but yeah.
Well, while we're talking, I'll look up, I don't recall seeing that in our local ordinance, but if that's the intent of paragraph 1, or section 1, and that that's the only way it can happen, then I'm supportive of that part. It's just, it's this phantom bonding that I just don't see is necessary. So, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Counselor Zandry?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Boz, so this ordinance, if the second part of it was removed, and it just stopped at capital improvements in the year, it would basically be an outline to spend, and you wouldn't have the power to borrow. If we passed an ordinance that didn't say anything about the bonding, it would basically say, you can take the electric division funds and spend them on these projects, but that's all you're permitted to do. Would that be a fair assessment?
I can't answer that. That's more of a legal question, and I don't feel qualified to
That's fine. I would read it that way. Basically, we're appropriating the money from the electric division funds and setting it up so we could spend it. The add-on is it gives the ability to bond if necessary, so I kind of wanted to follow-up on that part. By passing this tonight, if the finance department makes a decision to bond down the road for whatever reason, this ordinance already gives you the okay to do that. You don't have to come back to us, correct?
That's correct.
So, the idea is that we've already got the cash. I mean, because the mindset a few days ago was to bond this stuff, and it got pushed down. So the idea would be a condition that would make it so that you felt it necessary to do so. So, if that situation were to occur, and you bond, you don't need to come before us because we've already approved it, but that would have to mean that you were, there was some plan for the $1.839 million that's coming in from the electric division, because we have that money right now. That's the cash we've been spending for 12-plus years. Some condition has made it so that the finance department's decided, we better bond it this year. What scenario would that be if we've already got the $1.83 million?
I don't know. I don't really want to surmise, but it would have to be something that had a severe cash drain on the town's resources.
Okay, that's fair enough. That's fair enough. So now, if, because you've got the ability to bond, you bond, the projects continue to go, we don't lose steam, we don't lose time, we've got the cash. Now, that cash originally was set up for this item. How do we get the cash out for the strain, whatever the strain might be? That has to come back before the council, does it not?
To take the funds out of the fund?
So, in other words
I guess I didn't understand.
Okay, so the condition has occurred where you've decided to bond. We've allocated the cash here, or your right to bond if you felt one or the other needed to be done. So you've decided to bond. What balance, what check and balance is on the 1.8? Can you just, because you've already got this here, do you have, does your department have the ability to say, well, we're going to move $100,000 here? Does that have to come back to the council for approval?
In my view, it would still go into the cap and nonrecurring fund. In other words, would the accounting office or the fiscal function have the authority to not move the funds? I would say no.
Because that's, you know, the example you gave was a serious cash crunch, and that was just, you threw it out there. So there's this cash crunch, which makes you decide to bond the projects. Now we've got the 1.8 million in cash. If you needed to move it out of that elsewhere, to wherever we were experiencing the cash problem, would that have to come before the council?
Yes.
All right, that's the only place, because, you know, to me, that's the check and balance here. We're giving the okay to spend 1.8.
Administratively, we have no such authority, that's correct.
So that would have to come back. You'd have to come back and say, we're having a tax collection problem, we need to move these funds, we're looking for the council's approval to move these funds here, these funds there, these funds there, but it would have to come back before us.
I would bring it before you. In my, in my, in my way of doing things, I would not do it without the authority to do so.
Okay, thank you.
Anything else from the council?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So, Jim, I looked at the ordinance, and I don't see any portion that requires what we're doing here today. It says money must be, shall be appropriated from the fund as the needs of the town demand consistent with the provisions of chapter 108 in said section 308d of the charter, to pay the cost of any capital improvement plan. I don't see where, I mean, you're taking the position that we can't do any of this absent at least section 1. I don't see anything like that in here.
I'm not going to dismantle the ordinances or the ordinance before us. I mean, these are questions, as I've stated before, years for years now, that maybe should be investigated by law, and I don't have the authority to tell law to do that.
No, and I respect that. I just, I have a problem when, you know, a question is asked, and, you know, I'm told, we can't do this without doing this, and it's based upon the ordinance, and I just don't see it. So, I don't know. At this point, I'll defer. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
If there's nothing else from the council, then we'll call the roll.
Thank you.
No.
Laffin?
Yes.
Latourneau?
No.
Moreau?
Yes.
Shertel?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Testa?
Yes.
Zandry?
Yes.
Chairman Savoni?
Yes.
The ordinance is adopted.
Thank you. On to item 9, which is to adopt the 2017-2018 budget. As the budget sits as amended as of Thursday night, it is not balanced, and before we can adopt the budget, it needs to be balanced. With that, are there motions? I see Counselor Laffin.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I think it was my first year on the council. There were amendments that the council had made that I wasn't comfortable with or I didn't agree with, and I brought them back up at the final meeting, and I wanted to do that again, especially in light that we have an unbalanced budget. So, basically what I want to do, because I think, you know, like I said the other night at our meeting on Thursday, that we have a lot of jobs, but if we have one job, it's to pass a budget. And I said on Thursday, and I've talked privately, and I commend Counselor Zandry for his attempts and for the discussion. I'm just not comfortable with the way that we went about and where we were taking money to make, to make what wasn't, which doesn't come out to be a significant cut in the mill rate at the end of the day, especially with the political disorder of trying, of balancing the votes and the budget, and it was just, it's chaos. And last year was chaos, and I'm hoping to avoid that same chaos this year. So I would like to first start and move that we restore $100,000 to the consolidated pension plan account of the pension fund.
Second. Moved and seconded, discussion on the council. Counselor Laffin, then Counselor Fishman?
I think we need to restore this $100,000, because this is a number handed to us by accountants, consultants, it's actually a number. This isn't just, we can't just arbitrarily slash it. We may not pay it all out, we may have to, we have obligations. It's just, it's just kind of a, it's just kind of a, it just seemed like a irresponsible place for me to take $100,000 off, like, well, we're looking for a chunk of money, let's go someplace where there's a lot of it, let's just cut it off here. And I'm just not comfortable doing that. If we had a specific program, or a specific job, or a specific piece of equipment, that would be different. And this also has a lasting effect on subsequent years, and it's just not something that I am all, that I am at all comfortable with. And I wanted to go one more time for the discussion, to give ourselves a chance to kind of pull back on that a little bit.
Counselor Fishman?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So, in my opinion, I believe the motion's out of order, in that, in effect, it is a motion to reconsider a matter that we already voted on at the last meeting, and I think we established precedent at the last meeting, because we did reconsider a motion, and it was the ruling of the chair, that it had to be asserted by someone who was on the side of being successful in the motion. You know, that being said, I'll, you know, at the end of the night, after we got all through that, I remember making a motion with regard to the building department, and based upon a memo of the department head asking for more money, and, you know, that was voted down, a mere $900. I don't know, you know, the motivation behind voting that down, but, you know, I
How does that relate to this?
Well, it relates to the, I mean, Counselor Laffin was talking about where we are, how we got there, and redoing things. So I'm reflecting.
Mr. Chairman, it's just a clarification. I think Robert's rules of order with the issues over reconsidering are only meant for one meeting, and the purpose of that is to not have a meeting be held up by constant revoting of a single matter. It doesn't carry to a subsequent meeting.
I agree with you, Mayor, and I believe the budget is still in play before the council, and therefore, I will rule that this motion is not out of order. Counselor Fishman?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. You know, I understand the problems behind what's before us. You know, I voted in favor of the motion based upon the history. I recognize that there's fat here, and, you know, I think I pointed out at the last meeting that we've had surpluses, and certainly, there hasn't been an overture to fund the pension more utilizing those surpluses. And, you know, I understand the overture of the motion, I just don't know at this point that it's prudent, so, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Counselor Testa?
Thank you. We, as has been, as has been pointed out, we went through our budget hearings, and a very small amount of changes that were made did go through, you know, a motion and vote procedure. We ended up with, whatever the number is, 3?
322.
322 and change. After a long evening where attempts were made to try to impact the tax, proposed tax increase much more dramatically, but this is as far as it got. I can say "we" because I was, I went along with it. What I would suggest is that, rather than wring our hands over the fact that we have an unbalanced budget, make the simple correction and remove, reduce the revenue line by 323 and change, and now you have a balanced budget, and the spirit of the reductions that were made last week stands. And in making that point, I would just remind all of my fellow counselors who on that evening voted to approve the three or four reductions that totaled 323 and change, to stand by their original vote, and deny this motion and the subsequent two or three that will follow, which each will try to restore the reductions that were made, and then we'll make the proper motion to reduce the revenue line. Let's face it, it's not a large amount of money, it's not a big impact, but it's a little bit of a reduction in the increase in taxes, a little bit we can do, when we had all had voted previously that, okay, these are reasonable reductions. There's no skies, the sky's not falling on any one of these changes. You know, I know, everyone out there knows that if this budget goes through next year, we're going to have a million and a half, or $2 million surplus. We're not going to run out of money. We're going to be all right. So, let's not wring our hands over a few dollars and at least tell the taxpayers, we'll try to save you a little bit. So, that's it.
Counselor Zandry?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I want to, you know, echo Counselor Testa's sentiment, because that is the solution. The solution here is basically, we've cut $322,000, but when we got to the end of the evening, we couldn't agree to not tax the taxpayer an additional $322,000. I picked this line and all the lines that I chose that night, because I needed to put the cut somewhere. I was specifically instructed that I couldn't just come in and say, well, let's cut 3.8 million from the revenue side and 3.8 million from the expenditure side. I needed to identify where. So I picked this line, because it's surpluses every single year of the three years of record that I've got. I think the ask of lowering that number to kind of shim it up a little bit wasn't out of order, because the idea is, you're taking $100,000 differential from numbers that are three and four times larger year over year. In totality of what goes on in the budget every year, we increase, we increase the entire budget 2.8 million, and then between the expenditure side and the revenue side, we see a differential of $5.9 million, which means the tax increase in total never needed to occur. 4.3 million the year after that, and 6.1 was the differential. We underestimated our revenues, and we overestimated our expenses. And then the third year, 3.46 million. So to suggest a line that doesn't have $100,000 in it, when we've got history that shows, I mean, this is history, this is hindsight being 2020. The money's here, and if it's not here, it's elsewhere. And even if this was the mistake, and the line got overspent, the money is elsewhere, and they can come before us and shift it around like they do throughout the entire year. The solution here is, we cut this money, we should agree to not collect it from the taxpayer, or adjust it from some other revenue line. And that also was brought up. The accounting rule has a maximum number, I believe it was 98% on the collection rate, and I think it was 2/100ths of a percent more. If they used that number instead, it would have been an acceptable number to use, and it would have balanced it right out. The idea here is the money is there to cut. I won't be supporting this, I won't be supporting the idea here is the money is there to cut. I won't be supporting this. I won't be supporting the consequential, the, the follow-up ones that I believe are going to come up, because I think that the idea is, just like Counselor Testa said, agree to, to lower the revenue line on the taxation side, and get the numbers to, to match. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Counselor Marone.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. You know, people ask me how I felt about the budget initially when I got it. And I have to say that I, you know, based on the, the minor increases in expenses, and the minor increase in taxes, I thought was fairly reasonable. I have other issues with the budget, and how we handle money in town in general. We had $200,000 worth of transfers in today's consent agenda. I, I don't know if I can say that's average, but it's probably not that uncommon for meetings for us to have quite a few transfers. I think that there are some issues in the budget process. I think a lot of the issues stem from the fact that the council just doesn't have enough information on how the whole budget is put together, how things, money's expended throughout the year. And that is a major concern of mine. That being said, I think the administration does a good job running the town. I think they do a great job putting the budget together. Mr. Laffin said that there was chaos last year and this year, and I would agree with that. I think the chaos stems from a lack of information. So, I don't want to talk for five hours tonight about this, to essentially come up to a scenario where we vote down the budget, and then the mayor gets the budget anyhow. I don't think it makes a lot of sense to, to try to hang us on $300,000, which in a $150 million budget is really a drop in the bucket. Ideally, I would like to vote on the idea of reducing the revenue line first, before we get to the other motions. So would it be appropriate, Mr. Chair, to make a motion to table Mr. Laffin's motion until we have, to submit another motion perhaps ahead of it? I guess what I'm saying is, if I can get enough support to reduce the budget line, then I, then I will do that. But if we can't, then I'm not going to hang this up for five hours-
You, you can-
Over $300,000.
You can make that motion.
So moved.
Second. Moved and seconded. Any discussion on the motion to table? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
And I vote no. The motion carries.
Mayor. All line items are not equal. $100,000 from pension is a serious matter. $100,000 from an insurance is a serious matter. I'll leave it with that at this point.
Thank you, Mayor. Is there another motion? Counselor Sullivan?
Just, just a note. Barbara, I am also a no on that, please. I do not-
Does anybody else want to note their vote? I believe it was 6-3 to table. Does anybody disagree with me? Okay. That motion is tabled. Is there another motion? Counselors Zandry.
I would just, Mr. Bose, can you give me the exact amount that the revenue line needs to be dropped, so that I can make a proper motion here?
Well, are you going to be skipping to motion, the expenditure motion, or going back to revenue? You just tabled the revenue.
All right.
Well, balances according to what occurred last Thursday night?
Right. The, the revenue, the revenue line is out of adjustment, I believe, by 322,000?
522.
522.
All right, so you need revenue, general fund revenue budget of 161,817,879, with the reduction from the mayor's budget being 322,522 from the current tax line item.
So that would be my motion to change those numbers as listed.
Oh, you got to repeat my motion, or else it-
Madam Clerk, did you get the motion?
Could I ask Counselors Zandry to just make it slightly clearer, please?
Was 322, 522, correct?
That, that I have, but what do you want to do with it?
So, to, to reduce the revenues by that amount, so that the two sides match?
Thank you very much.
Revenues, revenues from taxes, that specific line.
Thank you.
Current taxes.
Current, current taxes.
Moved, I believe, is seconded by Counselor Testa. Counselor Shortell?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I, I want to echo what the mayor said, that all line items are not created equal. I have concerns about the health insurance line item. That's part of this motion. Part of this motion is predicated, at least a third of it, on reducing $100,000 from health insurance. If we want to talk about history, well, history tells us, they got this number wrong last year, because they had to add an appropriation of $342,000 mid-year, because we were trending higher. We're self-insured, but we have stop-loss, and stop-loss is like extra insurance. The way individual stop-loss works is, there's a cap per person. Our individual stop-loss level is $200,000. That means that if anybody gets sick, Wallingford's on the hook, up to $200,000, at which point, we're covered for that given year. So that's why, to me, yeah, $100,000 in this budget, yeah, I think it is a big deal. And I understand that, that notion, we'll just transfer the money from somewhere else. But as Counselor Marone just said, we average about $200,000 in transfers every, every other week. So, now you add that to that transfer, and it, to me, it's trickle-down economics. Suddenly, you're losing that money here. It's, it's being taken from somewhere else, and it goes back and forth, back and forth, and eventually, I don't know where it leads. But I, I am not willing to predict that nobody will get sick, nobody will get cancer, there'll be no expensive drug treatments. I have no idea. But with $200,000 of stop-loss, I, that concerns me. I agree about, Counselor Marone said about the information. I don't like the information we get, and that's something that we're going to explore after the budget cycle. We get awful information as counselors. The, I won't get into that now. So I'm not saying I completely disagree with Counselor Marone, or with Counselors Zandry for that matter. I respect what, what he's trying to do. But on this one, I can't support, support it for the reasons I've stated. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
I said it Thursday night, and I will say it again tonight. Well, first of all, I agree with everything Counselor Shortell said. In this day and age, when pension funds are being scrutinized routinely for their performance, I think it's a major mistake to not fund the pension allocation that is recommended by the actuary. Certainly, that's where the funding begins every year, and I think it's irresponsible not to follow the recommendation of the actuary when it comes to funding the pension. Mayor, I see your hand.
I just wanted to flush that out a little bit. Our position on that ripples through our contract negotiations. It ripples through our representations to the credit rating agencies, through, to any borrowing we do. That's, that's a serious issue. And at the point we look like we don't fund it, it, it will have a negative effect.
Counselors, Counselors Zandry.
So, one of the conversations that came out of the evening last week was the fact that the pension overages are always there. That's another line item, that we've always got money left over, and it just ends up rolling into the surplus. The consolidated pension was 335,405,466,000. So, if the concern is that I'm looking to take $100,000 from this line and tighten it up, hypothetically, by the history, I'm not going to affect it at all, because we'll still overage it out. But that's okay. The argument being made now is that this is going to be the year that it's going to go the other way. But if it doesn't, and this overage shows back up once the year is tallied out, I'm going to be making a motion that we take the funds, and before we roll it back to the general fund, that we just push it right into the pension fund. If we're supposed to have it at 72 and 73%, or whatever the, the agreed-upon numbers are supposed to be, then if we've got this remainder that's left over, we shouldn't be sliding it into the general fund. We should be sliding it into the pension fund. And that'll have a positive effect in the future, because any money that gets invested today, interest will grow on it in that fund. And any year that there's a shortage, we've buffered it up in, in the years, in the years before. At the end of the day, we are still talking about a budget that always comes out where we've raised taxes, and we are not utilizing the tax differential. And it's not necessary. These were the lines that had the most play. I stand by the reasons I chose them. This is not to suggest I don't believe we should not fund the pension. We are funding the pension. All we're doing is we're squeezing on what's been the overage. And I, and I don't like the line transfers, but they're necessary. You can't budget how much snow there's going to be. You don't know when you're going to blow an axle on a truck. These things happen. We, we are trying to hit a moving target every single year with these numbers, and it's not an easy thing. And to be in a situation where we're talking about a surplus and not a deficit is an awesome place to be. But if the surplus is so wide on both sides, that we feel the need to increase the taxes on the residents of this town and the business owners of this town, I think we need to look at it. And that's where we are right now. And nothing stops us from maintaining these numbers, because there, there isn't going to be a shortage. We're over by $6 million last year, audited and closed, between the revenue side and the expense side. It's not like this money isn't there. And I don't believe that the credit rating agencies are going to look at the fact that we moved $100,000 to tighten up a line, and suddenly view us as, as a risk, as a different risk than we were the year before. Thank you.
Mr. Bose?
Sorry, yeah. Based upon the consensus, non-binding consensus, I'll, I'll say, from last Thursday night, we are going to probably be presenting you folks with that option to sweep some of the unutilized funds, if any, at the end of this fiscal year, into the pension plan. But the reason why it hasn't been done in the past is because frankly, I don't have authority to do so. We, we match our, the employee, the employer's share is based upon the actuarial computation. Now, if I go in there and I, at the end of the year, let's just say, sweep a couple hundred thousand dollars in the pension plan, I've, I've actually put in more than the actuaries have computed for us. I, I don't know, honestly, if I've got the authority to do that. And frankly, I'm going to, I'm going to make a mistake on the side of caution. I'm going to say, I probably don't. But we will be coming, as, as Counselor Zandry has stated, we will, we'll revisit that issue, maybe in your, your last meeting in June, based upon the consensus that I, that I got last Thursday night, unless I was wrong. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Mayor.
My understanding is that on the actuals, it's a million to 2 million that's the so-called surplus. If you have a $160 million budget, that's a percent. You know, if, if you, if you want to find out what happens when you play games, just take a look at what's happening at our Capitol Building. Once you start fooling around with this stuff, it becomes intoxicating, and it never ends. We have a duty to budget responsibly, and we budget for full employment. That means you need pension for full employment. You need insurance for full employment. If you're guessing that, oh, we'll, we'll be under, and you make the wrong guess, that's what has happened over and over again in other layers of government. Somehow, we're going to be special, and it could never happen here? The odds defy that happening. We need to stick with self-discipline and deal with things responsibly, which means we take the advice of professionals and budget accordingly.
Counselor Fishbein, I think you had your hand up.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. So, you know, I don't want to fall into the trap of the, you know, the sky's falling, the pension fund is sacrosanct, we can't touch it, because we might recall that last week, the reduction to the pension fund was more than $100,000. I, I, there was actually two motions last week with regard to the pension fund. There was the reduction based upon Mr. Bose's memo of April 17, which I, I forgot how, I think it was 47,000, something like that. Okay? So, so, so we were already reducing that based upon the recommendation of Mr. Bose, and then we did another $100,000. So, it's certainly not sacrosanct. And I know that's based upon projections. That's what we heard that night, that based upon the projections, these adjustments are being made. And I give good credence to that. But looking at the past history of the line is also a proper way to project. And that's what people do in businesses. What, what do things cost you in the past? And this is how we, we deal with it. So, so let's look at the past, on just this one particular portion of this. In 2014, there was a variance of $335,000. And this comes from Mr. Bose. Mr. Bose sent us a, a document. So, $335,000. And in 2015, there was a variance of $405,000 on just this, this one line. And in 2016, there was a variance of $466,000. So, the variance has gone up over the last three years, overfunded over the last three years. And the motion that had passed is one quarter of the variance, it's less than one quarter, of the variance from just last year. And it's certainly not trimming it down to the bones. So, you know, I can buy into the philosophy, you know, I, I'm not in favor of lack of funding of the pension. But history says that we're going to end up in the same exact place with an overfunded pension allotment. So, I, I don't think the motion is improper. I don't think what's before us is improper. And, you know, certainly, since the administration had come to us and asked us to reduce the line slightly already, I can't buy the sacrosanct argument. So, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Chairman.
Mayor.
As everyone up there knows, but perhaps will not verbally acknowledge, the number is based upon the number of employees. That's why the reduction was suggested, to true-up the actuarial recommendation against the number of employees. Numbers of employees do change during the year, which results in, in changes not only in these lines, but in salary lines. So ultimately, you, you arrive or are faced at, well, should we budget at not full employment? Guess that perhaps so. There'll be something there, because why not? There's usually money left over because, in salaries, because there's not always full employment. So is it wise to tell the public that we have, call it 1,000 employees, but we're not going to budget for 1,000 employees? We'll budget for 750, and hope that somehow the 250 aren't there all of the time. That is what happens over and over. That is the way you get budgets that are deficits. You don't budget for what the budget says you're doing. You budget for some other figure, guessing that what you're telling in the way of expenses is not really accurate. And then when the overtime costs come in, and you don't have money for it, you end up with spinning heads and finances, and the result is a mess in terms of delivery of services, and what the public perceives as an ineptly-run fiscal program. The key here is, what is the measure for budgeting? It is number of employees. Certainly, we think that we should be budgeting for full employment, because that covers what we're telling the public, and that's what we're trying to achieve.
To the mayor's point of talking about 1,000 employees, and then only budgeting for 750, that's a gross exaggeration. That's not what $100,000 is going to do here. I mean, the very fact that they, they adjusted themselves by 47,000 kind of outlines the, the narrowness of it. kind of outlines the, the narrowness of it. And the three years that we surplus out that line, we had some real tough winters and a lot of overtime, utility crews, public works, and we still didn't seem to have that problem. The numbers, the numbers speak for themselves. You know, we had a $147.9 million budget. Our expenses came in 2.3 under, this is 2014, and our revenues came 3.5 over. That's 5.9. Taxes went up that year 2.8. The next year, 2015, 152.2 million budget. The expenses went under by 3.2. The revenues came over by 2.8, was 6.1. Taxes that year went up, 4.3. The final budget is the fiscal year ending 2016, 155.7. The tax increase that year was 3.4. Expenses came under 2.8 and the revenues came over 3.2 for a difference of 6,000.04. $100,000 is what we're talking about here. And 322 and change from the revenue side to balance things. I can't believe we're having this discussion. I really can't. Because what we're talking about is taxing everybody another $322,000 when we're talking about five and six million dollar differentials. That's what we're talking about. I'm all done. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
I'd like to encourage us to have a little more respect for each other's opinions. Those of us who are against the cuts that were proposed are against them because we consider the information upon which they are based very important and essential to the way the town runs. Nobody, nobody up here wants to vote for a tax increase. But we have an obligation to vote for a balanced budget. And I think that's the point that needs to be emphasized. Counselor Laffin.
Yeah, I'm just curious, in the last five days, if anybody's changed their mind from the four or five that occurred on this vote for today. I mean, we can keep talking about it. It's the same people, we're saying the same things. The mayor's saying the same things, Jim Bose is saying the same things. We're all saying the same things. So, I think we should just move to the public for their comment and then let's have a vote.
Anybody else wanna speak before the public? Anybody from the public wanna speak?
Paul Chardulo, Two Bay Berry Drive. I would simply like to say that I do not support the tax increase for this year. I'm not gonna go through all the detail of the surpluses that we've had on both the revenue side and the expense side to the tune of millions of dollars for the last five years. And what I, what I'm hearing is, at least Mr. Savoni is looking at that data and saying, that's not there. I, I don't, I don't see it, I don't believe it. With respect, I think that the town consistently overestimates expenses, underestimates revenue. Why? If you wanna get a tax increase, it starts with expenses. You have to increase the expenses to the point where you justify a tax increase. We put in, as part of our budget, we allocate 4.2 million historically. This year, we're allocating 7.2 from the reserves. Historically, we've never spent a penny of that money. So why do we put that in there? Well, we put it in there because if we didn't, the administration would have to come before you and ask for an even larger increase to justify the inflated expenses. So, that's a problem. I don't think the council has been able to sufficiently scrutinize the budget and we've passed five consecutive unnecessary tax increases. If we got better reporting, I think that you could probably do a much better job. The mayor this year reaffirmed that the administration does not submit a forecast for the current year. You just don't do it, even though that's the foundation for understanding his forecast for next year. Now, I understand why he doesn't wanna do a forecast because based on the nine months of information that the chairman acquired from the controller, if you go look at that, it, it looks to me as if we're heading for another surplus this year. And I believe those, those surpluses should be reflected in, in the 1718 budget. As I said, I, I think you should cancel out the tax increase and reflect it in the general government portion of the budget because that's where all the excess is. If you look at the education budget, it's very accurate. It's within, I think it's like four tenths of 1%. So all of the error is in the general government budget. That's why I think you should reduce that budget. And there's, there's no, there's no risk associated with that because the administration can always come back for more money. I think that on the question of, and we got into that a little bit again today, trying to understand the bits and bytes at a very detailed level, I don't believe that's a requirement of the council. It's nowhere in the charter. It's one of these things that we've evolved to over the years. And the council has just bought into it and continue to do it. But you don't have to do it. You can, you can say, look, we're gonna, we're gonna, we're gonna cut the general government budget by 2.8 million and instruct the mayor to go back and reallocate that money with his department heads. That's the right way to do it. The council can't do that at that level. And finally, I think that the administration, I think, should be providing better performance reports to improve accuracy. And I think basically, we've, we've gotta get in the mode of fixing some of the problems that we've already identified. The pension, which is worth 5 million. The fact that we use the pilot money from the electric division, which is 2 million. The bond issue, which is costing us 5 million. And I think we need to take a hard look at investing and restructuring the town and bringing in some expertise to do some analysis on business processes, operations, and automation. We can probably save another 5 million. I think we could probably reduce our operating expenses by 15, 17 million dollars a year, which is what we need to do if we're gonna be able to survive all the, you know, the state mandates. So, thank you.
Anyone else from the public wanna speak?
Bruce Conroy, 13 Burke Heights. Um, Mr. Chaddell said it great, he did. I know you look around, you don't see many people here, but everybody in this town for the last few years has been listening. And they're getting tired of being overtaxed every single year and seeing those surpluses. It's great that you can save us money and you put it away, but you don't spend it on anything real. You need to stop overtaxing the people. We all see it. Everybody in this town knows. And every year, a few more of them get tired of it. So pay attention. They're the ones who voted you in. And they are getting tired of you, overtaxing us every single year. That's it.
Anyone else? Then I bring it back to the council. Madam Clerk, would you call the roll?
Fishbein.
Can I just be clear on the, on the-
I can read the-
It's the revenue side.
So to balance it, to bring it down, it's the motion that we did last week that failed? Okay. I, I'm good. So-
You're good?
Yes.
Very good. What's your answer?
My vote is yes.
Mr., I'm sorry, Mr. Fishbein. Is this the motion? I, cuz I'm just a little bit lost in the, the motion, my son.
Can I just read it so we all know what we're doing?
Yeah, would you please? If that's okay. Sorry, Mr. Craig, I didn't cut you off.
Sorry, Chairman. The motion is to reduce the revenues from the current tax line item of the mayor's budget by 322,522.
So what number?
And to establish the revenue-
Oh, that was it. That's all I got.
Well, to establish total revenues of 161,817,879. Did you get that?
161.
That was based upon last Thursday evening's reduction of the 322,522.
Yes, okay. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm sorry, I was just a little bit, a little bit lost.
Fishbein? Yes.
Laffin?
No.
Laterno?
No.
Maron?
Yes.
Chortel?
No.
Sullivan?
No.
Testa?
Yes.
Zandry?
Yes.
Chairman Savoni?
No.
Counselor Laffin.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to remove my motion from the table.
The one that had been tabled?
Yes.
So you're withdrawing your motion?
I'll withdraw my second.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a new motion. I move that we restore $100,000 to the consolidated pension plan account of the pension fund, that we restore $100,000 to the health insurance of employee insurance and other benefits account, and that we restore $60,000 to the buildings and grounds account of the public works budget.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Discussion on the motion. Counselor Maron.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. You know, to Mr. Conroy's point, I think the public is watching. And I know last year, we got quite a few letters from people around budget time about concerns that they had with the budget. This year, there's really only been letters from two gentlemen who frequently come to the meetings. And I'm getting the sense from people out there that they have, that they understand the situation in Hartford and the situation in the nation is not great economically. I think the town is pretty well-run. Again, I have issues with the things I mentioned before, but I just wanted to say that, you know, if we couldn't pass the 322, I'm not gonna hang up this budget on, you know, the sour grapes over not being able to pass the minor league reductions.
Thank you, Counselor Laffin.
Thank you. I'd rather approach all of this proactively. It's easy, it would've been easy to just sit at the beginning and wait for the, the motion for the 322. But I'd rather attack this positively instead of just sitting back and saying no. And that's why I made the motion when and the way I did. And I've added the other two items to this motion because that's where I was going anyway. And I think we should just do it or not do it, but let's make the decision now.
Counselor Zandry.
Mr. Bose, do we have any power or ability later in the year to make a mill rate reduction on the second half collection of the taxes?
I don't believe so. And I hate to answer your question that way, but I, I don't know for sure legally, but I know locally, you're establishing the mill rate for the year.
Okay.
I don't know if the state has, you know, some 75-year-old law that was tacked on to a farm bill or something. I can't, I can't answer that. From the local ordinance, the answer would be no.
It's, it's, that's a fair enough answer. I suspected as much and I wanted to ask because we're, we're left without other options up here, really. The, the end of the day, when we have another year to books close out and we surplus out again, we have a couple of options to try to do what we're doing here today, which is even just lowering some of the differential a little bit, or doing something ridiculously expensive, which would be to say, hey, look, you know, we surplus out 2,707,000 one year. We tried to apply it to a budget, that didn't work. And, and maybe we say, you know, we wanna rebate check everybody, which is the most ridiculous thing going. Because to me, a rebate check system costs a lot of money. There's a lot of accounting and you lose some of what gets returned to the taxpayer in the administrative costs of trying to get it done. The best place to do it is right where we're trying to do it here. So I, I was hoping that there was a mechanism and I kinda figured there wasn't. So once this mill rate is set, the taxes are gonna increase and then we're gonna watch destiny unfold. Because I can't say history, cuz all I've got is the history. But I, I'm not in support of this because, again, we're raising taxes more than we need to. And, and that's the only reason. And I don't want it to come across like sour grapes and, cuz that's not what it is. As, as strongly as others feel that this isn't the right way to go about it, I feel like there's gotta be some way to go about it. And, and the way to go about it is to start chipping away at these cushions that history has shown us. And I have to agree with what was said up here earlier, and I don't remember who exactly said it, but that's how you run a business. You allocate your expenses and you've got these line items left over at the end of the year. Well, we're allocating too much for this expense bucket. If we're happy with it and we're still making good profits, well, great, then we can leave it a little fat and know that, you know, if something else goes, we've got room for it. But when you talk about a business, that's your, and you're the owner or, you know, you're the majority shareholder or whatever it might be, that's the differential of your profits off of customers getting a service. This is tax dollars of the people. And this is why I feel like we need to try to find ways to cut, cut these margins that I think are still a little too wide. Now, some ideas have been floated, like the pension fund and the money left over there. And, you know, we're, we're limited by what we can appropriate and force and carry forward. But I, I am only not supporting this, not because I want to be here till midnight again and not because I wanna cause chaos up here, but because I think we need to move forward with a way to reduce these increases because they've been too much. But in, in the same amount of respect I feel I got when I was making my motions, I wanna send it back. I think everybody up here is trying to do the things the way they see fit. I just think that we could be doing a little bit more. So thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Counselor Sullivan?
Yeah, just a question. Tom, help me please, I was trying to write as quickly as I could.
Sure.
100,000 pension, 100,000 healthcare. What were the other two?
60,000 from buildings and grounds for public works, that's it. And this would leave intact the original employment-related reductions that Counselor Chortel made a motion for on Thursday.
Yeah. I got it. Okay. I'm good. That was, that's what I wanted, some clarification. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Anything else in the council? Anything from the public? There being none. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Fishbein?
No.
Laffin?
Yes.
Laterno?
Yes.
Maron?
Yes.
Chortel?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Testa?
No.
Zandry?
No.
Chairman Savoni?
Yes.
The motion passes.
Counselor Laffin.
Mr. Chairman, I move we adopt total general fund revenue budget of 162,778,49 for the change made to the mayor's proposed budget on the attached reconciliation details sheet for the fiscal year beginning July 1st, 2017.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Discussion on the council. Counselor Fishbein.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Am I to understand that where we currently sit, anticipating that the expenditure budget as it currently sits passes, that we're unbalanced? Is, is that where we are?
No, this, this reflects the, the numbers that were just added back in by Counselor Laffin's motion that just passed.
Okay. Because the motion modified the expenditure lines and now we're bringing the income in line with where the expenditure lines would be?
That's, that's correct.
Okay.
And you're leaving the reduction in that was offered up after personnel recalculated the amounts of the total of 62,552. So we're actually reducing the mayor's budget just a tad, by that 62,000.
Okay. So this is an opportunity for me to talk about something that I hadn't brought up previously. It is reflected in the revenue budget. And that's the ambulance situation. And it's been mentioned a few times tonight that this body doesn't have a lot of information. And- And, you know, that's one of the most distressing parts about this budget, is that, you know, a few years ago, it was decided that the ambulance was going to become an enterprise fund. That was the way we were going to go. And to my knowledge, it's been generally self-sustaining. There's been a capital infusion of up to ten percent. In fact, I think it's been at ten percent, um, based upon the ordinance that we adopted. And then all of a sudden, on April first, we find out that it isn't working out, and there's going to be a shift. And that was the first that I heard about it. I don't know if anybody heard previously. But, you know, that's part of, being part of a, a, a team. And, you know, certainly there's other ways that that could have been dealt with. First of all, the ordinance could be modified. You know, when I talked to Deputy Chief Alsop about, you know, how much we're off, he said just a tad, two or three percentage points. You know, so we're at ten percent now. We could've easily met as an ordinance committee and talked about that if we had some notice, raised it to fifteen if we thought that was the right, right thing, and kept it as an enterprise fund. The other thing we could've done is we could've addressed the revenue side, um, that we've talked about. We've talked about the collections and the revenue. And, and what I did in Hartford is I had my staff look into that procedure. And we're not bound by the rates. There's a procedure that's in place where we can say we want to be outside of the, the established rates and, and ask for more. And I think as a municipality, maybe we have, might have some good arguments, because my understanding is we never did that. So I, I just don't think we did enough. We weren't kept in the loop. The decision's been made for us, and I'm very disappointed by that. So I just, you know, this was my opportunity, because, you know, revenue is shifting, it's all on the fire department budget. I understand based upon the mayor's memo that if that wasn't done, there would be an additional, I think it's sixty-eight thousand dollar expenditure. But, you know, I, I wish we could've had the discussion before, there before. And what other towns do is they put it out to bid. I mean, let's, um, but we're at a place that we're not even going to talk about that. We're just throwing up our hands and business as usual, and I'm just not happy with that. So thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mayor?
Mr. Fishbein, what do you mean by put it out to bid? What would we put out to bid?
The ambulance services that other towns do.
So we would put out our ambulance service to, to a private contractor?
If, if when the bids came back, that was a fiscally prudent thing to do as other towns do, I, perhaps we would at least have that discussion.
Well, we, we don't have the ability to privatize without some serious discussion with the bargaining unit involved.
Okay, but to not engage-
We would, we would have to be facing the fact that we would no longer run an ambulance out of the fire department. We would commercialize it, and we can't do that unilaterally. To your points about the, the, uh, the way it was set up, I think I was certainly very clear when we were adopting the enterprise fund that we shouldn't be needful of putting any more than ten percent, and the goal actually was to reduce that amount, so it would truly be an enterprise fund operating, self-sustaining, on its own. That was not occurring. In fact, you could argue that a lot of the expenses associated with that were not included in what was the amount of money represented as, as the cost of the, of the ambulance service. So when it, certainly when the budget documents came to me, you know, it was very clear, this was not going to work, and the ordinance was very clear. At the point it requires additional funds, it immediately ends. To entertain funding it even more with taxpayer creates a huge... I, I don't know what you call it. It, it certainly is not an enterprise fund any longer. So let's, let's look at the rate issue. You can apply for higher rates. Right now, I think it's somewhere around a thousand dollars, and I don't know if that's the, uh, basic life support or advanced life support, but it, it's a thousand dollars for the ambulance. A good thirty to forty percent of that revenue comes from Medicare, and Medicare will only pay, I believe, sixty percent, sixty, sixty-five. And that's, they pay on a formula that doesn't, it doesn't matter what your rates are, and to have them pay you, you have to agree you're not going to chase any amount that is not paid to you. So not only do they only pay eighty percent of a bill, but they pay seventy percent of the eighty percent. The healthcare system is broken when it comes to many facets, and certainly with regard to this facet, it is broken. One more financial huge challenge that faces this country. So I understand the desire to find some fault with the way this was handled, but until now, I've heard nothing from anyone with regard to concerns over the recommendations, the direction, the operation of the ambulance fund or the ambulance service. But that's the background. The reimbursements are not there, no matter what your rates are.
Any other comments from the council? Comments from the public? Mr. Morganstein?
Larry Morganstein, South Main Street. I, I would be remiss if I didn't start by saying that I've been coming here for a number of years, watching everybody up there, and there is no doubt in my mind that every single one of you take this very seriously. You spent six hours the other night. I may end up disagreeing with your conclusions, but the seriousness of purpose can't be doubted, so I just wanted to say that as a first thing. The second thing is that it's been echoed up here a number of times, and it's something I've observed, is that the council is often at a disadvantage in terms of information, when they get it, how thorough it is. This is, as Tom Laughin, Counselor Laughin has said, the most serious thing that you do every year, and it really does require you having the most information, being most involved, and it's consigned to this small period of time where you're asked to make these decisions year after year. And every year, the council is talking about the same things and desperately trying to figure it out. And it's not to say that you guys at that table aren't trying to provide the information. You have your methods, you have your explanations, but it still leaves even the most experienced up there in a quandary and not sure of things. And that's a problem, because we're talking about a hundred and fifty to a hundred and sixty million dollars every year. And it affects the lives of every citizen here. And I'll make this brief, is that it seems that we always come down to a choice of we don't want to be Hartford, and there's nobody here that wants to see Hartford at this point. We know that things are out of whack there. We need to live within our means. But it's a false choice to say that there is only our way or Hartford's way. There are options in between. While we're asking Hartford to live within their means, we're year after year asking the citizens to provide a cushion that every year builds and builds and builds. I wish I could say, I, I gotta commend Jason, Counselor Zandry, Counselor Testa, Counselor Fishbein, and everybody else that's gone line by line trying to find anything to try to cut here. It's commendable, but in the long run, it still leaves the taxpayer yet another year with a tax increase. And I've never heard myself say this, but I'm going to ask you all to vote no. I think we need to break this fever, to send it back and say, we've got to do it a different way. There are other ways to do this. We cannot have the taxpayers... I could afford it, not that I want to, but a lot of my fellow townspeople are not in that position. We cannot keep on going back and back, just like we can't expect the state to keep going back and back and asking for more. When do we get to the point as a town that we say it can't be business as usual? And again, I just want to say I appreciate the efforts. It's hard being up there. It's easier for me to sit back here and say that, but at the same time, I'm asking you to maybe do something out of your comfort zone and say, maybe a statement has to be made, maybe we need to live within our means. Maybe there's got to be a way where the budget can be balanced without a tax increase, and the only way to do that is to say no. Thank you.
Anyone else from the public? Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Fishbein?
No.
Laughin?
Yes.
Laterno?
Yes.
Maroon?
Yes.
Chortel?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Testa?
No.
Zandry?
No.
Chairman Savoni?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Mr. Chairman, I move we adopt the total general fund expenditure budget of one hundred and sixty-two million seven, the seven thousand eight hundred and forty-nine dollars for the changes made to the mayor's proposed budget on the attached submitted reconciliation detail sheet for the fiscal year beginning July first, two thousand seventeen.
Second. Moved and seconded. Discussion on the council. Discussion from the public? Madam Clerk, would you call the roll?
Fishbein?
No.
Laughin?
Yes.
Laterno?
Yes.
Maroon?
Yes.
Chortel?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Testa?
No.
Zandry?
No.
Chairman Savoni?
Yes.
Motion passes.
I move we establish the property tax rate for the fiscal year beginning July first, two thousand sixteen, two thousand seventeen.
Be seventeen.
Yeah. Two thousand seventeen. It's okay. At twenty-eight point five five mils, real estate and personal property taxes in excess of one hundred dollars shall be made in two installments, the first of which is due July first, two thousand seventeen, payable on or before August first, two thousand seventeen. The second installment shall be due January first, two thousand eighteen, payable on or before February first, two thousand eighteen. Real estate and personal property taxes of one hundred dollars or less shall be paid in one installment due July first, two thousand seventeen, and payable on or before August first, two thousand seventeen, as provided by Connecticut statute, chapter two oh four, section twelve dash one four four. Motor vehicle taxes shall be made in one installment due July first, two thousand seventeen, and payable on or before August first, two thousand seventeen, as provided by Connecticut general statute, chapter two oh four, section one two dash one four four A. Delinquent motor vehicle taxes shall be paid only in cash or by certified check or money order as provided by Connecticut general statute, chapter two oh four, section twelve dash one four six. Property taxes in an amount of less than five dollars shall be waived. Checks in payment of property taxes which have been returned by the bank shall be subject to a thirty-dollar fee.
Second. Moved and seconded. Discussion on the council. Counselor Sullivan?
Thank you to Mr. Bose. Mr. Bose, what, what, how, by how much does this increase the average homeowner's taxes?
Well, if I, I was just doing a quick calculation on that, that's going to bring it down to about a hundred and twenty-one dollars.
A year?
Per ye, uh, for the, for the next year, correct. Uh, that's on the average residentially assessed parcel.
So, okay, a little over ten bucks. Okay, a month, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Certainly. Any other questions, comments from the council, from the public? Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Fishbein?
No.
Laughin?
Yes.
Laterno?
Yes.
Maroon?
Yes.
Chortel?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Testa?
No.
Zandry?
No.
Chairman Savoni?
Yes.
Motion passes.
I move we adopt the budgets of the divisions of the Department of Public Utilities for the fiscal year beginning July one, two thousand seventeen, as herein included.
Second. Moved and seconded. Discussion on the council. Anything from the public? Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Fishbein?
No.
Laughin?
Yes.
Laterno?
Yes.
Maroon?
Yes.
Chortel?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Testa?
No.
No? Right? Zandry?
No.
Chairman Savoni?
Yes.
Motion passes.
I move we adopt the budget of the capital and non-recurring expenditures fund for the fiscal year beginning July first, two thousand seventeen, in the amount of one million eight hundred and thirty-nine thousand four hundred and twenty-five dollars in revenues and one million eight hundred and thirty-nine thousand four hundred and twenty-five dollars in expenditures.
Second. Moved and seconded. Discussion on the council. Anything from the public? Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Fishbein?
No.
Laughin?
Yes.
Laterno?
Yes.
Maroon?
Yes.
Chortel?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Testa?
No.
Zandry?
No.
Chairman Savoni?
Yes.
Motion passes.
I move we approve the special funds of the Board of Education of the Town of Wallingford for the fiscal year beginning July first, two thousand seventeen, as attached and submitted and made a part hereof.
Second. Moved and seconded. Discussion on the council. Counselor Zandry?
This being the Board of Ed section, I'm, I'm just simply reiterating the fact that I'm rejecting the entire budget and not anything in particular to the Board of Ed.
Any other discussion on the council? Can I just, um... Counselor Fishbein? Thank you, sir. Can I just ask, this budget is reflected on page, is I hear seventeen? We, uh...
Are you talking to pages in the budget book?
We, we have an attachment that we're submitting with the motion.
Yeah, I, I reg, we regurgitate what's in the budget book to the attachment. Just for your, for, for your ease, that's, that's all.
No page number?
Which motion is this, I forget?
This is the motion on the education budget.
The special funds.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
No, not the board budget, the special. These are most, many of these are federal pass-through of the state of Connecticut, and some are direct federal grants. I'm sure Mr. Chortel and Mr. Maroon are quite familiar from their experience on the board with these.
Thank you for clarifying that. Any other questions on the council? Questions from the public? Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Fishbein?
No.
Laughin?
Yes.
Laterno?
Yes.
Maroon?
Yes.
Chortel?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Testa?
Yes.
Zandry?
No.
Chairman Savoni?
Yes.
Motion passes.
I move we approve the special funds of the Town of Wallingford General Government for the fiscal year beginning July one, two thousand seventeen, as attached and submitted hereto and made a part of.
Second. Moved and seconded. Discussion on the council. From the public? Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Fishbein?
No.
Laughin?
Yes.
Laterno?
Yes.
Maroon?
Yes.
Chortel?
Yes.[1787.64]
Yes.
Shortell?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Testa?
Yes.
Zandry?
No.
Chairman Savoni?
Yes.
Motion passes.
I move we approve the capital appropriations and force reserve fund for the fiscal year beginning July one, two thousand seventeen, the amount of one million three hundred and sixty-two thousand one hundred and eighty-five dollars in revenues, and one million three hundred and sixty-two thousand one hundred and eighty-five dollars in expenditures. This represents the amount as of April thirtieth, two thousand seventeen, which may decrease as expenditures occur through June thirtieth, two thousand seventeen. This amount may also increase if the council approves any unspent Board of Education funds to be carried forward, also known as the one percent fund, at fiscal year end.
Second. Moved and seconded, discussion on the council. From the public. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Fishbein?
No.
Laffin?
Yes.
Laterno?
Yes.
Marone?
Yes.
Shortell?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Testa?
Yes.
Zandry?
No.
Chairman Savoni?
Yes.
Motion passes.
I move we authorize the chairman to sign three copies of the finalized budget, two to be filed with the town clerk, and one to be placed on file in the Wallingford Public Library.
Second. Moved and seconded, discussion from the council. Public. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Fishbein?
Yes.
Laffin?
Yes.
Laterno?
Yes.
Marone?
Yes.
Shortell?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Testa?
Yes.
Zandry?
No.
Chairman Savoni?
Yes, Jason, I don't take that personally.
Motion passes.
That wraps up the budget portion of our meeting. On to, do we have anything for item ten?
No.
Item eleven.
Mr. Chairman, I move we go into executive session pursuant to Connecticut general statute sections one dash two two five F, one dash two hundred six B, one dash two hundred six E, and one dash two hundred and ten B four and ten, to discuss pending litigation claim involving CMEC arbitration and legal advice related here to the Electric Division B. And then one dash two ten B four and ten, to discuss pending litigation claim involving CMEC arbitration and legal advice.
Second. Moved and seconded, all those in favor of going into executive session signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, I declare the council in executive session. Is there a motion to come out of executive session?
Some moved.
Second. Moved and seconded, all those in favor of coming out of executive session signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, I declare the council back in public session. There being no further business on the agenda.
Move adjourn.
I would entertain that motion to adjourn I just heard. And seconded, all those in favor of adjournment signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, I declare this meeting adjourned.